So it's March third, March twentieth, two thousand twenty-three. We call this reorganizational meeting to order. The first um order of business is to elect a chairperson. Are there any nominations for chair?
Nominate Bruce.
Second.
Any other nominations? Nominations are closed. All is in favor of Bruce?
Aye.
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 I'm assuming you're abstaining.
Yeah.
And Justin gave an aye.
Yep, got it. And um now I turn it back over to Bruce, who has a gavel in front of him.
Okay, just the next thing that we need to nominate and elect the vice chair. Do you want to be vice chair?
I'll nominate Kathy.
Okay.
I'll second.
I'll second the nomination.
All those in favor, any other nominations? All those in favor Kathy?
Aye.
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 We need to designate an official newspaper for publication and need legal notices now. Typically, that's the Rutland Herald.
There's still the Rut- Rutland Herald.
Okay, so that's by consensus? By consensus?
We all good with that? I am.
Yep.
Next on it, we have to set the day of the week, time and place of our regular meetings. Is everybody still good with this day and time?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay. And typically every year we adopt rules of procedure. Everybody's had a chance to read those. Should that be a motion or can we just do that by consensus?
I think we do it by consensus.
Yep.
We'll do that then too.
Yep.
Okay. Do we have any additions for Delicia and Sandy?
I don't have any. If you and Mark doesn't have any?
No, Mark, Mark is good, no?
Okay.
So approval of select board minutes. Let's start with March sixteenth, our long for select board minute.
I make a motion?
I'll second it.
Um, the one thing I noticed was that the meeting was actually started at six fifteen, wasn't it? Not six thirty.
Okay. That's true.
Any other discussion?
Okay.
All those in favor, approval of the minutes?
Aye.
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 And minutes from the informational meeting. Do we have any corrections or discussion on that? None? All those in favor, approval?
Was there a motion or second on that one?
Oh, I make a motion?
I'll second.
All those in favor? Pay orders. We currently have a pay order for March twenty-first for twenty-four thousand, six hundred, five dollars and forty-two cents. Do we have any additions to that?
No, no additions.
Questions or comments?
I make a motion?
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Road Commissioners report.
Well, I think I'm gonna let Steve start. I'm gonna be the mellow one tonight. I don't know what happened. I get a phone call that the gentleman was gonna dump snow in the door yard and yada, yada, yah. So I don't know the whole story. Sandy knows more about it probably than I do. I've been out of town all day. So I don't know what you'd like to do with it. But probably not a wise idea to be doing.
Lot of work.
Yeah.
I don't know if there's anything we could do to redirect his attitude, this gentleman's attitude.
Probably we could just ask Sandy to send him a note that it was plowed on a Friday and it was sanding today. The road, the road that has no houses on it is not gonna be your first priority when it's a major snowstorm.
And it was, yeah, there's was more than a lot to this storm with the higher you've gotten snow wise, so. You know, I think they did pretty well considering what we had going on and stuff. I don't feel that they need to be, I don't wanna say harassed, but take this kind of nonsense from anybody. So, you know, he should have called me, is what he should have done. He usually calls me and he didn't call me this time.
And he has your number?
Oh, yeah, I got it in my phone book.
It's on the website too.
Okay.
It's also in the monthly newsletter.
Okay.
So I guess we're not having static with the road crew. If there's issues, I wish they would take them to me first and then we can figure out which way to go with them without bothering the crew.
I just finished spending thirty hours up there pushing snow banks back.
No matter what the situation was, that kind of behavior was, is not acceptable. It's not acceptable, so.
Well, it's twice in the same week. We had it with another gentleman.
That was my fault.
Well, you picked your blade up. I was following you.
I put a wheelbarrow pole in the chair.
Yeah, well. That.
We live in Vermont.
Yeah.
That's kinda what I thought. But he's still mad.
Yeah, he's always mad, I guess, I don't know. Other than that, I think we fared pretty well through the storm. I don't think we had any issues, breakdowns, couple stuck trucks, but it's no biggie.
Okay.
I think that's better than what a lot of towns like.
Yeah, some of them had some real bad ones. Yeah.
By the way, the deputy who stopped by to talk about this complaint said she was surprised she'd heard from anybody about roads in Wallingford. She said their office gets complaints all the time, ask, and they have to call a lot of towns in our area to come clean up the roads, but she said we never have to call Wallingford.
She's the one that called me on Route seven the other day.
She told Jill and I that she never needs to call Wallingford to get the roads cleaned up. They're always cleaned up.
Good work, guys.
And please everybody.
Some days are better than others.
But other than that, I don't think I have anything else. I don't think there's anything on the agenda.
Well.
We have an annual financial plan.
What's that?
It's annual financial plan. Needs to. State requires the town to file an annual financial plan related to highway suspension in order to qualify for paving and structure and bridge grants, et cetera. We would pleasure the board that we sign it. The board normally does. Looks like we will all be signing it, yes. Do we want to reappoint Phil as the road commissioner for another year? Phil willing to do it?
Not that I'd like to ask.
And it's Phil willing to do it?
Yeah, he is.
Okay. You okay, Phil, that Phil?
I will do that.
I think we should make it a ten-year term.
Don't push your luck.
Do we want to?
No, really, patience accepted.
Okay.
Motion, make the motion.
I make a motion?
Yeah.
Second.
Session.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Congratulations, Phil.
That's a campaign well run, Phil. Yeah. I work hard at it.
You do work hard on it.
Um, in our packet saw, we had a road maintenance agreement with Phil Baker and Sons. Have you had a chance to review that, Phil?
Yeah, I did. I, I think that's what you wanted right there, Sandy, right? Now we break down.
Okay.
And I didn't, this says draft, so I didn't sign it. You want to, want to sign?
Yeah, yeah, I know, I want, I want to incorporate all of that into.
All I did was give you an hourly rate for each piece of equipment and as we talked about before, it'll be at your select board call or whatever we need to do. Somebody else makes that call when they need, that's all. I have no issues with that, you know?
Okay.
So I can just, before the next meeting, I'll incorporate what he has offered for hourly rates and you can review it and decide on approve or whatever amendment agreement at the next meeting, so.
Okay. Honorable mentions. Uh, we want to thank Milton, Colleen Seaver, who donated, donated money to the food shelf in town French's memory. And we wanted to thank all the town meeting election volunteers who assisted at the polls this last election. And we're on to public comments. Everybody else is here for a specific reason, I take it?
We are.
Conservation Commission. Carol is seeking permission to use income from the sales of the honey from the stone metal to purchase some new bees. Do you want to speak to that, Carol, or?
I can hear what you said, I'm sorry. I'm turning on my hearing aids. Okay.
I guess you're here, you're looking for permission to use the hunt, money from the sale of the honeybee to purchase more bees?
Yes, I mean, there, because you'll get, I think you'll probably get some money back from our actual allotment for the year, but I would prefer to spend that money. Jane and I worked hard on the bees and, and putting the honey together and I'd rather spend that money on what's coming than not. So, you know, you're just, and I can't guarantee you we won't use everything. I mean, something can come up. We're, we're now discussing um removing the invasive species next to the uh transfer station, Waldo Ling. And, you know, the tarps that we would need to put down or whatever we decide to do might be expensive, not hugely expensive, but it might go into our regular town money. And so I can't promise you there'll be anything left. But we have until July, or till the first.
We, we also, Mr. Debbie Scram, we also assume that the bees will be like paying for their own keep, so to speak. You know, that that money would, instead of just draining the conservation commission budget, it's whatever we could get as, as out of them to go toward them.
And now we have to buy three new colonies because they all died.
This is the last time this is. Did he all die?
Yeah, uh, Jane was waiting to talk with um Kevin Mullen and you haven't had a chance to get a touch?
He hasn't, well, I think, and he said he'd go to for me when he's got the moment to come over and take a look at the hive because I dismantled it, but I haven't painted it up.
To see if there was a reason why they might have died.
I have heard that a lot of people have lost bees this winter, so I'm kind of keen to meet some of them. Because they should go through it, you know, if you're able to.
Is it more good with it?
Yes.
And the other thing, you had a grant application.
But you should have copies of that.
There you go.
And Dennis and his wife were.
Yeah, I can speak to that. Um, Dennis DuHanning, Creek Road. Yeah, I came across the wire, there's an opportunity for a conservation grant to two hundred and fifty to six hundred dollars.
Right.
And I was talking to Ralph and there's one section on the bog trail that's very steep and it, right now it's got timber steps, but they're rotting. They've been rotting for quite a while, so we have an erosion problem and um an accessibility problem. So we just thought we'd take it, try to take advantage of this grant money to buy some material to build a new system in there. That'll both help with accessibility and also it'd be a set of stairs. It won't be on, it wouldn't be on the lay of the land, it would be above, so you didn't have the same erosion problem. So anyway, I think we asked, the grant total came up to like two hundred and eighty dollars or something like that.
Two ninety, web tax, but I think you gotta write it without paying the tax.
Anyways, uh, yeah, we'd just like to have the select board's approval to apply for that.
We still have to vote on that, aren't we? And I know that there are six out of seven that are probably this.
Yeah, I don't know if there's that. There was one trail that was so accessible to the bikes. That will in fact, that'll still be taken into consideration.
Okay, well, it's not that at all. There's only, there are two trails that are open to bikes. The main trail and then the trail which is to the south.
Yeah, this, this is not a bike, one of the bike trails.
This is, this is the bog trail, which is interior, I've, we've walked.
I walk them, but I don't know any of their names. Difference to me which one's what name.
I've walked it before, I'm good at names and landmarks and things like that.
I just wanted to make sure that infringement upon any of that too and access would not be affected.
It doesn't touch the outer limits trail at all.
We're good?
Okay. They can apply?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that was nice.
Sweet.
Hey Bruce? I did notice um where the boat launch is on the creek, Rock from Stone Meadow. The beaver have been taking down some trees and there's a couple trees that are kinda little makers leaning against other trees. I don't know if that's something that you guys have a way to get down or?
Yeah, Ralph Nixon talked to the, he's a tree, a tree warden in town.
Yes.
And he's looked at it and um I don't know exactly what he came up with for an idea. You know, one of them by the picnic table is, is caught up.
Right, that's the one I, yeah, that's the one.
Oh, right.
Yeah, that's the biggest one, the other one was little ones.
Yeah, yeah, well, they actually, just, just north of there, about thirty or forty feet, they took a pretty good sized one down.
Oh, did they?
They went down in the fall.
Yeah.
But that other one, Ralph, we're concerned that if, if they ever do get through it, it's not actually gonna come down for them. They would stay hung up.
Right.
And then at some point, I mean, at that point, it's a danger.
So you, I, that's, I was just, I was just curious, just wanted to bring it to your attention.
Yeah, 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 no, so the warden's been, he's come down and saw, he saw it, so he, he's aware.
I also felt there was some sort of special tape that you put around the tree. I saw them.
I think they're so far gone. The only way to do is take it down. It should look like much old enough.
Yeah, they, they're getting right through it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're done.
I love.
Thanks, Dennis.
Yeah, thank you.
Jane. Good timing.
Perfect timing, really.
Yeah, you're next. You just finished, yeah, so.
So, how's everyone doing? My name is Brian Early. I am the cross country and track and field coach over at Mill River Union. Um, I just started here um probably August of twenty twenty-two and I've been kind of helping with the program over the last year or so. What we're kind of requesting is, is to allow Mill River Union High School to have access to Stone Metal Park um and the rec center down there once a year for our cross country course. So we can host our SVL league cross country meet once a year. For this next school year, I think our planned date is September twenty-third. Let me double check that before we.
Publish it?
It's a Saturday, I know it's Saturday, it's September, I think it's September twenty-third.
It's supposed to be Saturday.
Yes, so it's us, as of right now, it's scheduled for September twenty-third over at the park. I think we would probably start the middle school race at nine thirty um and then do the high school boys, high school girls races, which will probably take about thirty to forty-five minutes each. Um, so maybe some two hours prep time before the race starts, maybe an hour or two to clean up after the race is over. Um, and again, I would like to have, try, kind of use this, this year as a test run, see it, use it as a trial. And then if it's a success, it wasn't too inconvenient, the course was good, everyone was kind of happy. Uh, getting it approved where Mill River Union High School can use that uh course at least once a year for their home high school cross, uh, cross country courses. Um, right now the school, or in the past, I guess I should say, is the school's been doing um the cross country course at the school. And I've, just from listening to the kids, again, I have never seen a host meet, but I've been on paying attention to what the kids are saying. And what they've told me is they don't enjoy it, it's confusing, um, it's a lot of laps around the school and they just kind of feel like they would rather not run home cross country courses, cross country meets. And they'd rather go somewhere else to compete because they just feel like um it wasn't really a quality experience for them. So I think in the interest of providing a quality athletic experience to the kids at Mill River Union, I think this is really important for us to kind of get this approved so that way they're able to continue competing at a high level, having their own cross country horse that they can have pride in. Um, just kind of keep building a program. Um, any questions about any of that?
We're probably, they'd probably restrict access to the park for one day and that'd be it, really.
Probably, I mean, honestly, it'd probably be from like, maybe like seven o'clock to one o'clock, seven AM to one PM realistically. And realistically, a- after the races are done, we'll just clean it up. It's not like it's, people compete at that point.
This would be limited to the rim trail, is that correct?
It starts down at the athletic course, so I don't know if you've seen the trail map?
Yeah, they gave you the map last.
Yes, we saw the map last time.
Okay, so it starts?
Basically the rim trail.
Yeah, it's, I don't know, again, I don't know all.
It goes all around, though.
Yeah, it starts down at the sports complexes. Uh, you're there do, starting like the middle, like outfield, um, from the, the baseball fields, they go out and they run the perimeter of all the athletic complexes twice. And then they go up to the trail, up to the lake and then back down. Um, and I know there was like some concerns about like some of the parts of the trail, but I kind of set up the course so by the time they get to those like little tighter parts on the cross country course, their race would be so spread out that it wouldn't be um like a, like a, the traffic jam anymore, so. That first mile down at the bottom will kind of spread people out, like you'll have a, maybe a two to three minute gap between first to last place at that point and then it's gonna continue to slowly progress at that point.
Is there, how many schools are gonna be invited, will there be like school buses?
So, um, it depends, so I know that the way the SVL does it, they kind of just put a calendar out and then schools say, we're gonna go to that meet, we're not gonna go to that meet.
Yeah.
I know Wallingford Elementary is right there, so realistically, and it's only four hundred meters from Wallingford Elementary down to where the start line would be.
Yeah.
So for the most part, school buses can drop kids off and then potentially go up to Wallingford Elementary, so we're kind of solving that issue.
Okay.
And then when the meet's over, I mean, the cross country, is it your walk back?
Yeah, there you go.
It's a good warm-up. Good idea.
What about the crossing from the uh bridge over to Stone Meadow, crossing the road?
You'd have to have volunteers out there once the race is started to just kind of help direct traffic. I know I have a great bunch of parents that would probably be okay with helping navigate traffic out there a little bit.
Okay.
Yeah, there would be traffic there on a Saturday morning.
There would be traffic.
Cause the transfer station is.
Yeah, and it's just like that one strip, so like, once they get past there, it's good to go until they come back down. So you just have to have a um, a person out there just kind of helping navigate traffic, so. Any other questions?
You can put a sign on each end of the road or on the.
Yeah.
Or it just says, you know, potential delay or, you know, road closure, whatever, temporarily.
Put a warning like the week before. Most people go weekly, so.
Sports pleasure.
I'm all for it.
Fine, but?
Go with it.
I'll go with it.
Okay.
I'm good with that, especially because the, also we've been talking about the rep committee and the conservation committee working together and I like the fact that it's going to do something that's gonna be pretty widespread that people see, which is cool.
Yeah, and I really like, once we have the map, like people might use it locally, just like to train for a five K.
Right.
You know, because he mapped it out, he did all the work and we can just use it, so I think this could be an asset.
Yes, and I, I love the fact that we can sort of help our local high school
Exactly.
um participate more fully
Yeah.
within another sport, so I'm.
I mean, running around that school can help be fun.
It's, and I feel bad, honestly, like I feel bad for them, I practice already, but um, yeah, they were telling me like the, from what they told me, they were like, what would happen is people would miss sections of the um, of the course and it was, wasn't really a great experience. And then, and then the SVL, um, I know at the last coaches meeting, they talked about they don't want courses that are more than four laps of the same thing anymore. So I was just like, all right, like this is the perfect time, let's just do it now. So let's use this year as a test run and see how it goes and then after that, cause I want it to even be like, if I'm not the cross country course at Mill River anymore, I still want whoever's in charge of that program to have access and have that map so that they're able to use that course at least once a year for their meets.
I've had a child in track and field since the pandemic, before the pandemic now, and I don't think Mill River has hosted a cross country event.
They did one in twenty twenty-one.
They, they did in twenty twenty-one?
Yeah, it was at the school.
Okay. Didn't think they had hosted any, and I, I know they hadn't before the twenty twenty-one race.
They had, they had some.
Twenty nineteen, twenty twenty-one, I don't think they had.
I, I, you know, I'm, I'm very uniformized, but I know twenty twenty-one, they had held one. I can't, twenty twenty, I, no, probably not, uh, twenty nineteen, I have no idea.
I didn't attend one, my son was on the cross country team at that time, so wasn't one that year.
Any other questions or concerns that you guys may have?
Just want to say thank you for helping build the program and supporting the students.
Yeah, they're doing really well.
Yeah, I'm really excited for this new outdoor track season, so.
Wonderful.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Yeah, enjoy, see you tonight.
Thank you.
I guess it's just me.
Are you looking for permission to purchase a magnetic board?
Yeah, I have a printout of it, if you guys wanted to look at what I was proposing. Um, this was to facilitate like some group sports down at the, I just started one end and it's the same one that I have.
Yeah, I gave him that, they got it in their packet.
Oh, okay.
But that might have a little bit clearer picture, but they have the whole description.
What I liked about this one, it's um, it's about Mill River as far as price, it's a hundred and, there's a ten dollars off today, so it's a hundred and fifty-four ninety-nine. Um, you know, they're anywhere from fifty dollars to four hundred dollars, but this one got good reviews. It's weather resistant, so it has like a rubber, um, you know, barrier between the inside and the outside to prevent rain from getting in. It locks, it has tamper resistant, plexiglass. Um, the screws are on the inside. You wouldn't believe, a lot of them have the screws on the outside.
Oh.
So you would just, like, the thing locks, but then the screws are on the outside, so you could just like take it off, and that's a first one. So this one, the screws are inside, voila. So the idea is that we would be able to have, um, some community sports that we would reserve, the tennis courts, or, um, the fields, or the basketball court, to have group sports. And we have, um, I haven't been able to add in the seven written copies that we got to the questionnaire survey, whatever you want to call it, but a lot of people did offer to organize events for free, which was great. So we have like women's basketball, pickup soccer on Saturday mornings, pickleball. Everyone wants pickleball, by the way? I don't know, all, all, all rage.
Yeah.
Pickleball and swimming lessons. Everybody wants pickleball and swimming lessons. Um, yeah, other thing, you know, like painting, you know, there's, people had like lots of great things that they were willing to facilitate for free, so. Yeah. I think this board will get some use. And I can see the kids wanting to, like, you know, if they're practicing as teams or...
I think it's great to foster communication and, and to have the fields more used, to have that area used as much as possible. It's great.
Right. So yeah, so this is a hundred and, um, fifty-four ninety-nine. I think there's eighty dollars left from last year that needs to be spent, Julie, right? Before the end of the year, and then I was thinking we could use the other eighty-five or, I guess seventy-five with the discount, out of the, um, printed out the budget. I was thinking, uh, just the recreation programs, there's five hundred dollars in there, so we facilitate some recreation programs, having that, so I thought we could take the other seventy-five out of that. I don't think we've touched that five hundred dollars yet.
I think the consensus of the board is yes, do it.
Okay. So can the town order that, or you want me to order it and get reimbursed? How does that work?
We'll order it, because we won't have to pay tax.
Great. Perfect. Oh yeah, rec options. I was just sure, I wanted to talk to you before we start, like, planning, rec programs? How you wanted to work that, if you want us to get like approval for each rec program, but like all these people that volunteered for things, and, um, Morgan Ober is working on, um, becoming trained in meditation, and she offered to do like a, learn some meditation class for like a suggested donation. Um, you know, there's all kinds of people who want to do things, and I'm happy to do the legwork to try to organize and facilitate. Other people, like, um, Brian Farwell is really into soccer, so he was thinking about organizing the soccer, so, you know. We'll probably each pick a event and try to organize it ourselves, something that we're actually doing and can help. I really want to do pickleball, because everybody wants pickleball, so I was, I've been asking around to try to find an instructor that would come, like, maybe one night a week for like a month or something, and everybody who wants to learn to play pickleball can like come and learn. Um, so, I was going to use the rest of that five hundred dollars for, hopefully before the end of June, you know, we would probably try to do everything for like a suggested donation. Not everything would be like free, but like if somebody's willing to like do a painting class, and it's not going to cost us anything, you know, I don't know that we would charge people for that. I mean, I don't know. Do you want us to get approval for every little thing, or do you want us to just stay within that budget and just?
Use it up and...
Use it up and get as many rec programs going as we can? I just need feedback on how you want them, because I'm ready to start.
I don't think we ought to micromanage you. I mean, I think, I would say, do what you can within the budget.
Okay, good. Alright, sounds good.
Um, Keter, the boy, the girls varsity soccer coaches also do drop-in soccer, so Dave, just to let you know.
Is that Saturday morning?
It ha- was this year.
Okay. Just, I'll let Dave know.
Yeah, so he would, he would know.
No, yeah, I think he went to that, too. What do you think? Uh...
There was a group from like Wallenford and Timoth that, oh, a, a few years ago, that were using the, um, tennis court for pickleball, like, I think like every Thursday or something, so there was like a little group that was already going on, and so it was kind of nice. Yeah, I'm glad they painted the Y.
Responded, they want more pickleball, all the rage.
There's all sorts of videos on YouTube for that learning, too.
Oh yeah?
If anybody's interested.
They, they even have it in gym now at the school.
You could be the instructor. Yes.
I don't know how to play it at myself, but...
And Ben has taken pickleball, has played pickleball.
How is it, like, you teach it?
Yes.
At the rec center, I'm surprised the number of people I'd see coming and asking the hours for the rec, for the pickleball court at the rec center in Rutland.
Oh, really?
Yes. It's crazy, yeah.
I don't know where you can see something.
Oh, hi. Just the video thing.
So for the ball field concessions, somebody, um, inquired about whether it could be open. So I had asked Sandy and Julie like how that was done in the past, and they both said that it was basically like volunteers, just for the parents of the baseball players or softball players. Um, so I was wondering if we could put it out to the community, somebody to run it, or if we could open it up to like community groups to do as like a little fundraiser, like Sandy does for the music nights for the food, and, I don't know, I was just brainstorming ideas to get it open, because it's just there and it's not being used, and I, you know, there's probably some, some money to be made in it. It's nice, like, I remember when my kids were down there, it's nice to have some food available when you're spending a lot of time down there.
I don't think there's any available running water down there, so anything for food would have to, not have to worry about that.
Right, yeah, I guess it would just have to be like snacks and so it is. There's a fridge in there, I think. I don't know if it still works, but. Are you sure?
Okay.
We got it after Irene, so.
I guess you can check it out and see if it's still...
We can check it out. I mean, I don't think anybody, if somebody was willing to do it. I don't know, I just thought if we could put it out to the community to see if people could put together proposals. If somebody's willing, are you willing to consider having somebody run the snack turn? For baseball season, yeah, okay.
Would it be worth it to try to reach out to some like food trucks or someone that eat more evening? Like, recommend, like, just to have, like, if you have a food truck, um, they would, of course, take all the revenue from, uh, like, selling food, but they would still be there for when people were at pickleball or at some, what another, uh, event? It might be a fun way to, even especially the ones that are going to be coming to Wallenford Day.
Yeah, we could ask them, I don't know. I wonder if there would be enough business for that, you know?
I mean, if you had volunteers who were there with snacks, you would know that you would get customers and that they would be able to get a little money raised for future rec things.
Yeah, I wasn't thinking for us to make money. I was just thinking as like a community service, like, somebody would just have snacks. You know, so that like there's food down there for...
It is nice to have snacks down there when you're down there for hours.
It is nice.
Watching sports and everything.
Yeah. And I guess people could always like bring in water if you just wanted to like, just eat hot dogs or something, you know? I don't know, it's probably a way to... We don't have, um, water in the booster shack either at Mill River.
Oh, okay. So, yeah, kind of...
It's kind of like camping. All your water in.
There you go. So you could do a sim- you could do a similar thing. You could.
You could do something like that, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
You know what would be good? Would be the classes. The advisors, like, for tenth grade, eleventh grade, might be good ones. Volunteers.
Oh.
Yeah. For their final, for their senior trucks. I know they need, we're behind.
We, we have nothing.
We, I didn't even know we had to do it until like last week.
You're kidding.
So I think Megan's our advisor.
That we were supposed to be raising for senior year. I have no idea. Nobody told me.
Oh, we really haven't had schools on...
We didn't get the memo.
Yeah. Well, I mean, just thinking the different classes.
Good point. We should stick our kids in this back shack.
Exactly.
Good point.
But, but no, just for all the classes would be a good, it might be a good thing, because they're teenagers, so they can...
Yeah, they can make popcorn and, yeah, sell candy.
That's right.
So, yeah.
Just a thought.
Yeah, no, I think it's great, yeah. I'm sure there's tons of groups out there that would do it if we could adapt to that.
Oh, definitely, but...
You haven't had trouble, have you?
Not at all. We raised a hundred fifty dollars the other night for, uh, Chris Hines bike raise, bike trip for, uh, cancer. Yeah, just from the bake sale.
So how do you find people? Do you just email people directly?
Well, it, it was the Mill River, at the Mill River, uh, yeah, and sometimes it is. It's been the elementary school, it's been the historical society, it's just different groups, but...
It would be the same kind of thing. You just bring whatever you want to sell, and we'll just sell.
Yeah, it's just like having a massive bake sale. I mean, you could do like the bags of like different chips and stuff like that, I mean...
You just go, do a BJ's Run and, or Costco Run and buy bulk and...
Right, right.
Exactly.
If, you know, when the Little League is going, if, once the schedules get out with Little League, and those, that, when you know there's going to be a lot of people down there, that would be good. And if you got into like, uh, if you got into like a pickleball or a basketball league or whatever, I mean, and when, when your bulletin board gets kicking off and you know what groups are going to be down there, that'll be a great time to have it open and selling it, too.
Yeah.
During basketball season, those bags of popcorn in Mill River, those were a dinner.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so it would be popular.
Yeah. Okay.
Especially baseball, when you got the three fields going.
Yeah.
Oh yeah, there's so many people down there sometimes.
And little siblings that need entertainment.
Yeah.
Yep.
I think that's great. Alright, good. So we'll, maybe I'll put something together, or do you mind putting it out to the community if I...
Definitely, yeah, sure, yeah.
I don't mind doing the scheduling or whatever, you know, and helping clean it.
Mm-hmm.
Just figure it out.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And then the last thing was the lifeguard flyer. Um, we were talking about this at the last rec meeting, that we were thinking we might need to make it more enticing to get people to apply for the lifeguard position, so we were just brainstorming, like, ideas. And one idea was to put together like a flyer saying like competitive wages, you know, potential reimbursement for certification. Um, and one thing that came up a number of times on the surveys is that people want swimming lessons. It was like one of the number one things. And I know a number of parents weighed in who had like older kids, that kids used to be lifeguards down there, that said their kids used to teach swimming lessons to make extra money, so like on top of their salary, during the off-hours, they would teach swimming lessons. And I remember that, doing that with my kids a little too, like paying ten bucks, and then spend some time with your kid, and try to teach them swim, or it could be something more organized, but...
And if you had more organized, um, lessons, because there used to be, before that, there were more organized lessons, and you could get an hourly rate kind of thing going.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, there's potential for somebody to make some extra income on that and make it a little bit more of an enticing position. So, one thing we were thinking is like making like a colorful poster and putting it like contacting like the Rutland, um, high school, um, guidance office, and seeing if they could put it around the school and try to drum up some disputes, because I know we've had a hard time finding people.
And also, would you put it up like around Mill River? Because I think if it's posted there, it's going to be more in their face, and when they see a potential summer.
You can put it everywhere. Put it at MSJ, yeah.
Exactly.
Yeah.
The rec center just this week posted their, um, lifeguard classes.
Oh, they did?
Yes.
So we could put that on there, like dates?
Mm-hmm.
You're, and it's on our silver platter, like, you're a lifeguard.
Melissa Peterson, she may be able, the ones that help organize that class, may be able to also help, too.
Who is?
Oh my gosh, is it Melissa Peterson now?
Kim Peters.
Kim Peters.
Kim Peters.
Oh, Peters.
Yeah, Melissa, somebody's the swim coach.
She's the swim team coach, right? Kim Peters.
She's the director, but she also helps with the...
Peters.
Peters.
Yeah, Kim Peters.
Yep, I contacted her. I've con- already contacted her this year about, that we need lifeguards. I contact her every year.
I know, I feel like Rutland gets most of the lifeguards, so like if we want to like draw people from that pool, we need to make it more enticing, and so I think, you know, putting the hourly rate on there, which, uh, when we talked to Sandy about this, she said, "You guys need to set the hourly rate."
Yeah.
So, we put a number in the budget, but the actual hourly, we can't put an hourly rate on the brochure until it's set.
Right.
Um, and then as far as reimbursing for the certification, like, I think in the past, sometimes that's been done.
Yeah.
And that might be enticing to people. Because the other issue is, it's a very short season, so it's a big investment for somebody to make for...
A short season, that's true.
So, that's just what we're offering to do if you guys are up for it, to try to help find people.
When do we want to talk about setting that rate? When? When do we want to talk about setting the pay for the lifeguards?
Well, I mean, if I think you, if you want to do it tonight, you could, because it's, I mean...
Yeah, we're coming up on it.
It might be a good idea to do it tonight, if, uh, then get the, on the poster, if that's what you want. We paid, it was twelve seventy-five last year.
Yes.
I did contact Pitt, I, I contacted all the areas that had pools or swim lakes or whatever, and, uh, Pittsford and Killington were the only two that responded. Pittsford pays fifteen an hour, and Killington pays thirteen fifty.
Thirteen fifty.
For lifeguards. Fifteen for their supervisor, but thirteen fifty for a starting lifeguard.
Brian had contacted somebody, I think in Rutland Rec, and got the rates for them, too, and I think it was like fourteen fifteen.
Yes.
It was like significantly more than we were paying, but not quite fifteen.
Right, okay.
And they, and both Killington and Pittsford had them do other things, too. Um, they had to clean bathrooms, they had to clean the beaches, they had to pick up the garbage at the beginning and end of day.
Did they get extra money if they did?
That was surprising.
That was for their lifeguard rate? Okay, that's good to know.
Well, I wonder if we're going to have to consider something like that, too, like a combined position at some point. Like, I don't know how to do that safely, but, you know, I don't know.
It would depend on how many lifeguards we actually manage to hire.
No, but I mean, like, because we're paying somebody to sit at the desk and then, you know, check people in, and we're paying a lifeguard, like, if we can only find one person, like, how, you know, is there some way to make that one position? But, you know, you can't take money and watch kids in the water, too, so it, it's probably not really realistic, but, I don't know, just thinking out loud.
Well, you might be able to put within the lifeguard job, that if they're lifeguarding, they do the opening at the beginning, if they're in that first shift, in the second shift, if they kind of help supervise a closing, that wouldn't interfere with them watching kids in the water.
That's true, yeah.
Where you did sort of like that opening, as it come in, and they get set, they just do a few opening things. If they're closing it down at the end, they make sure everything's locked, they get all that, maybe they drop off something where it needs to be dropped off. That could maybe be part of their position.
And then we're also trying to get, I think there was a, one of the, um, counselors, too, that was going to try to get lifeguards through.
Yes.
If there's some way to like use that position in the mix, too.
Virginia, yes. She's very interested in getting her lifeguard position, yeah.
But she won't know until a while?
Well, I've talked to Lori and Lisa last week, and they, apparently, had been in conversation with her again, that she's very interested. So I sent her the, uh, the dates of, um, the Bennington one. We've had good luck with getting our, um, certifications down there. It's just like a one or two day cour- course, so it's been very convenient.
What did we set? What, what is the...
I was just about to ask, what did we set for a rate?
What did...
In the budget?
Yeah, what did rec ask for in the budget?
In the budget, we ended up with a five percent increase, wasn't it?
No, we put in a pretty significant...
It was, yeah.
Well, that's not what passed in the budget.
Yeah, I wonder what passed in the budget?
Late salaries is ten four, ten thousand four hundred. So that was up from ninety-five hundred last year.
That's up from ninety-five?
So that would be concessions and the lifeguard.
Okay. And the rate for concession is?
It's just minimum wage, thirteen eighteen. So minimum wage is higher than what we pay lifeguards, I'm sure.
What was that?
What we had proposed in our budget, I believe, was eleven thousand two hundred eighty-one.
So about two hundred dollars more than...
That's about a thousand dollars on us, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, ten four to eleven two eighty-one, but this is just the one I printed off my computer.
And that was at fifteen and a half?
I think it was fifteen, yeah.
So we have about a thousand dollars, so that would be...
But let's figure out the hour. Actually, we can probably figure this out, maybe, what the hours are. So, how many weeks is it? Is it eight weeks?
It's about eight weeks, yeah, so it's, hmm, say, June seventeenth.
Yes.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, maybe nine weeks?
When in August does it close?
Let me just count this. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
Yeah, it closes before school starts.
Eight.
Like, when college...
Obviously nine, if we go through the nineteenth, plus ninety, there'd be nine weeks. Possibly nine, if we go through the nineteenth, plus nineteen, there'd be nine weeks.
So it is six hours a day, seven days a week.
Um, lifeguards?
Yeah.
They do five, noon to five. Yeah.
So five hours a day.
And if, if we do seven days a week, if we, you know, in the past couple of years, we've just done Monday through Friday, 'cause we only have one person. So it'll just depend on how many people we can hire.
Julie, didn't we figure out an hourly rate for that, ten thousand?
And then for the front desk, it's.
So it's that, that's eleven to seven, so it's eight hours a day, seven days a week, so that's fifty-six. Fifty-six times, what was it, thirteen eighteen? Equals, times nine, so it's sixty-six fifty for concessions. If, you know, but it's gonna be closed sometimes, you know, with rainouts and stuff, they'll close, so it won't, it won't go eight hours a day. Seven days a week all summer, so, but that would, it'd be sixty-six fifty if that's what we did.
Yeah, so that all adds up to almost exactly what we proposed, but that got cut, so.
Okay. So then fifteen will work, right? We need to do less. Are we thinking, well, what about? What are we thinking, everybody?
Thirty-seven fifty divided by. Did you do five days a week or seven?
Seven.
What about fourteen?
So you said seven days for the lifeguard? Shannon?
Yeah.
But we've been only doing it for five hours.
Thirty-seven fifty, if we, um, we, we budgeted ten four, and the concessions would be sixty-six fifty if it ran full-time without any time off, so that would be thirty-seven fifty left for the lifeguard. I think.
How many hours would that be?
Well, they do, if we, they do five hours a day, if we do Monday through Friday, it's twenty-five, if we do Monday through Sunday, it'll be thirty-five, depends on what, if you wanna ha- have a lifeguard weekdays and weekends, how many, if just one person applies, we're only gonna be able to do weekdays.
I mean, there's one thing, if the counselor gets her lifeguard, then the camp would not need to have an additional lifeguard on, would they? 'Cause right now we do Monday through Friday, that's mainly because that's when the camp's there. But if one of their people has their lifeguard, then could we then adjust at least the 'cause the, and then another person would get hired individually as a lifeguard, that would be potentially two lifeguards that would be used. So at least that could at least, if that does happen, we would be able to have lifeguards seven days a week.
That doesn't even come out to bed on late.
That, I mean, she would only be covering the camp, but.
I think if she gets her lifeguard cer- certification, she would just be like.
Right, but I'm saying we don't need to pre- the lake would not necessarily need to have a lifeguard Mondays. Then we could push it out so it's weekend coverage.
So it would even be, so with the money that we have remaining.
At least to think if we can only hire one, and then she gets hers.
Yeah, if she's willing to do that.
Right, I mean, if she's willing to be a lifeguard.
Otherwise, what's the point of her getting her lifeguard if we're also providing a lifeguard?
What's that?
What is, if she is gonna get her lifeguard and only be a counselor, and then we have, and we're providing a lifeguard at that same time.
I think, I think last year they were concerned that there wasn't consistent lifeguard, and so I think she wants that, and then they, they go elsewhere, um, they've done field trips elsewhere for swimming, so I think she wanted, I think they just wanted the extra person with lifeguard training.
If you did it five days a week, you could pay if I did that right, you could pay sixteen dollars an hour, let me try, let me try that again.
Yeah, sixteen sixty something.
Yeah, sixteen sixty-six or something like that.
For five?
If you did it five days a week, so.
You might have to go with that.
You could pay the fifteen dollars.
Yeah, I mean, if there's a lifeguard on staff, I personally would prefer to have the beach lifeguard have a weekday off, because yeah, if there's already a lifeguard with the camp, there's not that many people there during the week as opposed to like the weekends, I would say we, you know, if we had to prioritize, then there's a lifeguard there at all times, only the lifeguard would probably just be working with the camp realistically.
Right.
But there's not that many other, I mean, there is other people there, but we would just have to post like no lifeguard on duty even though
Right, 'cause if.
There is a lifeguard there, but they wouldn't be working at the beach.
And if it was, if there was an issue of inconsistency already, I mean, that was for the town too, so.
Right.
If she's covering and doing it to be coverage for the camp.
And that's sixteen weeks, was that for one or two?
That would be her own additional decision to do.
They do meet four weeks though, so the camp, this lake is open eight or nine, so she, and they only meet four weeks, so it'd only be, it'd be four weeks.
But still then your lifeguard would be Wednesday to whatever, you know, or.
Right, like Wednesday through Sunday or something.
That way, town would always know there's no lifeguard Monday, Tuesday.
No Monday, Tuesday or something. Instead of Saturday, Sunday, just because there's more people down there on the weekends usually.
Because otherwise, there would be no point for us to pay for her to get a lifeguard certification.
In other words, it'd be two hundred and twenty-five hours of lifeguard coverage for the summer. And you divide that into thirty-seven fifty, and it comes out sixteen.
Sixty. Would that be for twenty-five hours a week?
Twenty-five hours a week.
And they could split it between the two lifeguards.
So you would prefer like a Wednesday through Sunday or something like that?
Yeah.
Or anybody in general?
Yes, 'cause I think that's when you have more families going down and it's more populated, when you would have more issues.
And we could look at the numbers too from last year or the year before to see like, to confirm that there's more people on the weekends.
And that would be, that would be five hours, that would be five hours a day, right?
Saturday and Sunday, yeah.
Yeah, like a twelve to five kind of thing.
That's what we usually do, right?
Right, yeah.
I mean, if that's what we got, that's what we have to work with.
It's better than nothing, I mean, anytime a lifeguard is there, it's better than not having a lifeguard there.
And if we have it during the busiest times, it's better than not having someone there at those times.
This, and this is where we have a problem because of the job description, we're making an assumption, this person that's that is not part of her job description is, said she'll get a lifeguard. That'll be, because they can't have a camp without, they cannot swim without a lifeguard, right?
So there was the issue last year, it was like sometimes a lifeguard wasn't there, they were sick or whatever, couldn't work that day, and then like it would be like ninety degrees out and the kids couldn't go in the water, and I think it's under, you know, that's why they wanted to have a lifeguard.
Which is why originally it used to be one of the directors was rec- was supposed to get their lifeguard certification, so when the camp is there, there is one. And none of those job descriptions now have that, it's just going on good faith, this one person wants to get it as a subsequent to what her job is.
Right.
And it's getting, where, where it's kind of an issue, it's either that should be written into that job description almost, if that's gonna be part of their duties. If she is going to utilize her lifeguard training as part of her job.
Right.
I mean, could we do six days of fifteen dollars an hour? So it's four sixteen is what it comes out to, what's left?
Thirty-seven fifty.
So that comes out to thirteen eighty-seven an hour to do six days a week. I just don't, I just don't know that we're gonna drop people for six, for thirteen something, it's barely above men on wage.
Yeah, and maybe, I mean, maybe if you go fourteen, even though it might push the budget line a little bit, I mean, there's gonna be days where it's gonna be rain out, where we're not gonna need a lifeguard there, so.
Or we just agree that we're just gonna pay somebody more so that we can get a lifeguard and only have it five days a week, I mean, I don't know, it's not a perfect solution here, but, you know, I'm just thinking the more we pay closer to like what they're making elsewhere, and the more we say like potential for additional income through swimming lessons, if you guys are willing to support that, if the right person comes along and says like, yeah, I'm interested, we can say, okay, Saturday mornings, you know, we're gonna have like three different groups and first come, first served, you know, whatever number of kids per group. If we can figure out how to facilitate that, I think it's not only what the community wants, but it could also entice the lifeguard to want the job.
That's what white stuff too.
Yeah.
It's their lifeguards that teach their lessons.
Right.
Rutland Town and Pittsburgh.
What do we wanna do?
So is that what we wanna do, do we wanna go with the hourly?
Twenty-five hours at?
Twenty-five hours at the sixteen?
At sixteen, or?
What do we think?
It sounds good to me.
I think that's pretty, pretty good myself, I mean, Pittsford's saying they pay fifteen, you talk to Killington and they're only paying thirteen.
And while the hours are limited, with that rate of pay, you make close to four grand in the summer. I, I don't think that's anything to sniff at for a kid.
No, not at all.
For summer income, plus there's the opportunity that if they did lessons as well on their free time, they could make a little bit more money.
Yeah, we just need to.
Okay, well, let's. Let's move on here, make a decision and move on.
Okay, do we need to make a motion?
It was sixteen an hour.
Can we do it by consensus or do you need a motion?
You can do it by consensus.
Okay.
Good with that, Justin?
And we can always work it as like up to sixteen dollars an hour, so that, you know, depending on who we get.
Oh, that's a good idea.
You know, depending on experience, like if we can pull like an experienced, amazing person with great references from Rutland that we're not even gonna have to like supervise and worry about, I'm just gonna show up and do an amazing job, it might be worth paying sixteen dollars.
Yeah.
And to be able to put that down to say up to sixteen dollars an hour, and that's above where anyone else is paying.
Julie, where, where does the certification reimbursement, what line does that come out of?
Oh, whatever's got money left over.
Okay, so does it co- does it come out of the salaries?
I'd have to look it up, I looked it up last time, see where we took it out of. For Ethan.
Two.
Summer recreation program, weekly rates. So, you know, we talked about raising these rates.
Yeah. What do we think, does this look reasonable to us?
Had we talked about making, uh, non-residents more like eighty, eighty-five?
I thought we had talked about eighty and eighty-five for.
Everybody?
Yeah, a resident at eighty and a non-resident at eighty-five.
What do we think?
That's.
That's what we talked about, I'm pretty sure.
Yeah, it's supposed to help offset some of the.
Help offset some of the costs.
Are we good with that, with asking for eighty for? And then what, what will we do for like two or three children?
Just as a point of interest, Proctor is starting a summer recreation program this year.
How much are you charging?
They're charging a hundred dollars per child.
Oh.
And, and the hours are a lot less, it's three, three in the afternoon, three or three-thirty, so ours goes to like five or so.
Yeah, so this school, I was just gonna say, but.
So, I mean, uh.
I'm thinking then, with, with that in mind, what if we did do the eighty and the eighty-five for one? One fifty, one seventy for two, does that sound reasonable? And then for three, um, what are we thinking?
That's where we have a fifty-dollar difference before.
You wanna do, um, for two, wanna do one fifty and one sixty, 'cause one seventy doesn't give them a break on two for hours a year.
So one fifty, one sixty for two, what about for three?
So you're to, uh, we were taking fifteen off before, so if we took fifteen off, eighty times two forty?
That'd be two twenty-five.
Two twenty-five?
Yes. And then would that be two forty or two thirty-five for non-resident?
Yeah.
Do we get a lot of non-residents?
Yeah, we actually do. Yeah, we get a fair number.
And I know there's quite a few that come up from Danby.
Oh.
Yes, yes, there have been quite a few from Danby, so what do we think for non-resident for three, are we thinking two forty?
Two forty.
What do you think?
That's good to me.
Okay. I wrote down for one child eighty and eighty-five, for two, one fifty and one sixty, for three, two twenty-five, two forty. You good?
Everybody good?
Okay.
Okay doo.
Now, Elfin Lake admission. What do you think for this?
There's some comments about, on the, on the survey about admissions at Elfin Lake.
One that I thought, I never thought of before, but like, um, offering a discount for low-income people, that was one that I saw.
Oh.
Which I never thought of, but, you know, there are probably people that can't afford to go to the beach, which is sad to think that people live here and can't go to the beach.
It's, it's a short season, and the, um, the sixty-five, it, it's for, it's for a very short amount of time, you know, it's eight weeks, so.
And we give them a discount if they get their passes before.
Right.
It may, so it's even less, it's like ten dollars less or something, so.
It's like fifty-five.
Yeah.
Yeah, we always go for that.
Yeah.
I mean, so the season pass, that's for the family.
So leave them where they are?
I'm comfortable with leaving them where they are, but I.
Still very cheap.
Yeah.
It's extremely cheap.
Right.
Yeah, I, I think leaving them where they are, and then also, but really push for the idea of, let's get some data on how many people are actually coming in each day.
That's a good idea.
You can, 'cause they weren't recording that, even if it's for people that are getting the passes.
And the concession workers can probably record who's coming in.
Yeah, they already do, yeah, they, they record it on a daily, on a, but, um, they don't, they, they were not recording season pass uses, so they'll stay.
We're gonna have them record that.
Right.
Dispatch here, they.
Yeah, they used to record it.
Yeah, they used to, they used to check.
They probably should.
Yes.
Yeah.
If we're gonna do, I think this.
Jill put, Jill put together a form already to record it with, yeah.
Excellent, yeah, we'd want that data.
So what about the daily visits, are you considering making those as well?
What are we talking for the daily, do we wanna base the daily or just keep them where they are?
It's three for adults and a dollar fifty for two to seventeen-year-olds.
Okay, what do you think?
Yeah, that's what I meant when I said I was comfortable leaving them where they were.
Yeah, it's, it's a good price.
It is.
We're all good for that?
All good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So, we need to get a zoning permit for the Maple Street retaining wall.
We have to give ourselves a permit.
Gotta give ourselves a permit. Do we approve applying for?
I don't know, I, I don't think we should waive it for us.
Yeah, I don't think there should be any, any favoritism anywhere.
So, we approve getting a permit?
Yep.
Need permit for safety.
Okay.
To have the permits for taxable stuff.
Annual appointments and reappointments.
I have a question for you, though, this, this is not for the select board to approve, this goes to zoning administrator, right?
Yeah, but, but as a select board, as, as the owner, would still have to sign that permit.
Okay, alright.
They did the same thing for the skateboard, it's, it's for the flood, 'cause it's a flood zone.
Okay, I just thought, somebody had said that it was a permit for us, that we could sign the permit, but.
Bruce will have to sign on the owner's line.
Yeah, okay.
Um, and it's, and I, I talked to Charlie about this, and I just wanna make sure, um, there's no state permits required or Army Corps, but Josh Caravall. there's no state permits required or Army Corps, but Josh Caravall stressed that measures need to be taken to make sure no concrete ends up in the water. And I talked to Charlie again about that today, but.
Yeah, he said no fish food.
Nothing in the water, no concrete in the water, as long as we get, take measures, no concrete in the water.
So, reappointments. So Sandy contacted everyone. William Weiss does not wanna serve as a rep to the Rutland County Safe.
Okay.
Waste District. Infrared does not wanna be the alternate for the IRPC and TAC.
Okay. Okay, we don't know if it's.
Yeah, she never answered, so I think we just, we'll just need to put it out there.
Okay.
Unless somebody on the select board wants to be the Rutland County Solid Waste Rep.
Better, Doc.
Durlin?
You're welcome.
Justin?
Um, do we wanna do this en masse or go through each one and?
Usually do it en masse.
Yes.
So maybe we entertain a motion that.
To reappoint those as listed or whatever.
Yeah.
So I make a motion to reappoint, um, the names as listed, for all those up for reappointment?
Who wish to be reappointed?
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
We do need to get a, um, scholarship. Did you wanna be on the scholarship committee again?
Yes, I'd be scholarship again.
Let's see. We're up to Boy with the Boot Garden Request from the Anewat. I don't know how others feel, but I wasn't comfortable with this. First of all, the town actually doesn't own the property the garden is on.
Sam.
Hi.
Hi, I'm here to speak to that.
Okay.
Very briefly, um, I came before the board last year because UVM had approved a special garden project at Boy with the Boot. And I assumed wrongly that that meant that we were covered under their initiative of a garden in every town. So, UVM has just notified me that we were approved as a standalone project, an educational, um, effort. So I would like to have the Boy with the Boot Garden designated as our garden, so that it's, when they list all the towns in the state, Boy with the Boot is the garden in Wallingford. So, it's that simple. And we need approval of the town because we're on, part of it is on public property, I believe, from the center line into where the garden bricks are.
So I'm wondering, what are the, what are the pros and what are the cons?
The pros are that they'll give us money for gardening supplies, not huge, but maybe two hundred and fifty a year. I don't wanna be smug without any solicitation, um, Julia's had a jar on her, uh, table, in the clerk's office, and we've raised a hundred and eighty dollars, so it just comes in. It will be very helpful, 'cause this year we're investing in some shrubs that are native shrubs, they'll run above fifty dollars each. So, I don't think that we will actually need the UVM money, but it could be useful in the future.
And this would be a yearly, a yearly amount that could be accessed?
Yes, we could apply for each year. The other thing is, we'd be one of the first ten towns to have a designated garden, so, that's sort of tempting in my competitive spirit. Holtley, uh, has one, uh, I mean, they're scattered around the state, but gradually, with outreach from UVM, the towns are getting going.
Now, the question is, what are the cons?
There's no cost.
I mean negatives. So, we, we see what's positive about doing this. What are the possible pitfalls?
My concerns was, as I said, the, the organization should publicly acknowledge volunteer support from UVM, so they're gonna want us to publicize it for them.
I think just acknowledging the UVM Extension Master Garden Program, right? Just giving like credit to the UVM gardeners for maintaining the garden, that's what's being asked here?
Sounds like they wanna use it as an educational tool.
Yeah, but they really don't want us to be just doing weeding and maintaining. We are supposed to have an educational component.
Okay.
And that will begin to kick in. You'll see Front porch forum announcing something at the library around pollinator plantings or.
So these would be like extra programs that would happen?
Yes.
And is there a cost associated to the town of those programs?
No, none. We would use the library community room and make a donation, but that would come from the volunteers, the team that does the gardening.
Okay. And this, this would be public education programs that anyone in town could come and tend and, and learn from?
Yes, and also more passive, we will have poster boards at the library that will talk about the benefits of natives, uh, when you plant natives, they do better.
Right.
Basically.
Yeah.
But are you planning on expanding that garden?
Uh, no, um, some of the volunteers have snuck up the street and they're now weeding the, uh, the strips that lead into the, uh, Wallingford House.
Okay, well then that's what I, like, where I was wondering with it, is if we're gonna expand that or go outside the.
We're not going outside. You know, if you've noticed on, as you're waiting at the lights or something, we've pulled the evergreens out, which has essentially expanded the garden, but we're still in the same footprint.
Okay, alright.
Does, will UVM require any signage or plaques in their garden? 'Cause I've seen that in other town gardens.
That was one of the things that I thought I read in the objective too.
I know. Is there gonna, does UVM require any signage or plaques within the garden that'll take up?
I hope the sign, uh, was not up last year, it's about this big. It will just stick in the dirt in between some plants. It will not be on the fountain or the walkway.
So what do we think? I'm okay with it.
I'm fine with it.
Bruce, you had hesitations.
Yes.
Do you still have them?
Yes.
Justin, what do you think?
I think it sounds, sounds good to go with what you guys are saying.
Okay.
What are your concerns, Bruce, other than the property?
Well, we don't own it, I, I don't like the idea that, that we have to provide education. I don't like the idea of the sign.
If we don't provide any of that.
Frankly, I don't wanna sign a document that says, I will do this, I will do that, because I will not be the person doing it.
Is there consequences if they find that if for some reason, something can't be done?
Uh, they might, I can't imagine this happening. They might drop us from the list of garden endeavoring town.
But that.
That would be the consequence, it's not, no legal.
I was thinking financial, like if they give us money, wanting it back.
No. No, that would be a year-by-year thing.
And once we do this, is this, does it have to be done every year?
No, hopefully not. I could've done it together if I understood that you use the same application, uh, but.
Yeah.
You have to submit two.
Motion if you want, you know, just vote against it.
I could, I could, I just, I'm reading through it. It does say, you know, my organization shall publicly acknowledge volunteer support, which is fine. But they're asking for upon request, I will provide the state office with information about the project's impact on our, our organization and community. Uh, how, how much is this, is the select board or the town gonna get?
I can't imagine that it would ever come directly, they might, I'm the point person that UVM communicates with. I think they would let me know that they want more information, and we could generate it. It's nothing that the select board or the town would have to do.
So, on, on the agreement, it says up, right above Town in Wallingford, it says, for this project, I affirm that I am an employer or authorized representative of. Can, would it be okay if you made Ann the authorized representative?
If we do a motion, we make her the.
And then she could sign it.
Can we do that? Can we make you the authorized signer?
I'm okay with that.
That's okay?
Okay.
I think, yes, if they come back and fuss about it, it's your prerogative.
Wait, I make a motion that we make Ann Awad the, um, the authorized representative of the, um, partner commitment form for the Garden in Every Town Boy with a Boot Garden.
Second?
I'll second that.
Great.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you, thank you for your support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We've been having fun.
Thank you.
So Ann, if you wanna sign this, I can, uh, scan it for you tomorrow and then email it to you so that you can submit it. I'll fill out the rest if you just wanna do the signature. I just wrote twenty thirty-three, I hope that's not perfect. Alright, thanks a lot.
Thanks, Anne.
Thank you.
Social media policy.
Okay.
This was triggered by, uh, this weekend when Julie had posted about the rabies clinic at the town hall and comments that were being made on Facebook that got rather nasty. So I guess Julie is asking us, do we wanna continue the Facebook account as it is? Do we wanna adopt the social media policy?
Who, who are the admins on the account currently? Is it just Julie?
Just Julie.
Okay.
I mean, 'cause there's the, of having other admins if possible. So that way to help monitor an approval of comments or turning off commenting, so that way. 'Cause I think Face, the Facebook is a great way to get stuff out for a lot of people.
So why do we want comments coming back on?
Right.
Can, can we use it as a way to get messages out, but turn off the comments, so that?
Yeah.
It would appear that we need to adopt a social media policy, and then we could designate Facebook as a government speech forum only.
Okay. So we need to, uh, adopt a policy first? Correct?
Yes, I, I would say so, um. Maybe we'll let Sandy draft up a.
That's what we can do if you, if.
Or I can work with Sandy to the, they have a model po, policy in here that we could adapt.
I mean, that just gives us an extra way to get information out on Facebook. But we don't need the.
We don't need the comments.
The comments, 'cause.
Doesn't do anyone any good.
We get that on, not for each one.
Jake, does we never run any kind of events where like, oh, comment and, uh, be entered into a raffle or anything else like that? There's not, if anything really, anybody wants to really say anything about it, they can share it and then say it on their own page, but it won't be on our site.
Exactly.
Right.
Yeah.
So I guess we have to table this for now until we have the media policy and then.
That would be my suggestion. Everybody's good with that?
Yep.
Opioid settlement. We got an email basically asking us to sign a release. Legally. As part of. Initially, when this happened, um, the select board supported just opting out of this thing. Later on down the road, Nelson said he had read, read through a state attorney general's documents regarding the settlement, and he thought getting into it might help the state get a distribution of funds.
Looks like we've got a small amount of money.
Yeah, we've gotten a little bit of money out of it. There's a whole bunch of pages and pages of legalese that they want you to sign. I'm, I'm of the mind that we just ignore it and opt out of it.
What do you think? I'm thinking these are payments that go towards the many who are suffering with opioid addiction, and we know that there's people in town that have been affected by this. What do, what, what do others think on it? Is it worth going through the legalese to get what looks like a small amount of money to continue getting small amounts?
And, but where does this small amount of money go?
Where does it go?
Good question.
Where does it go? How do you determine who gets it? I mean.
Is it really helping what says it's supposed to be helping?
So the town receives this money, what do we do with this money?
It just goes in the general fund?
So it's just for what it's supposed to be for?
No.
So I have a problem with that.
We would have to, we would have to earmark something for it to go towards.
So I'm with Bruce.
Okay.
And I am, I think we should stay right out of it.
Okay. I'll go with the majority decision.
Good with that, Justin, too, or?
It's the only way I would think, it would be worth it really is to, if we had some program where maybe it's a scholarship or something like that, that people could apply for, this money could go into it. Just as a, as right, the, we don't have, we've won, we don't have the skill set to be able to say, this is somebody who needs it, this is somebody who doesn't. Yeah, but, yeah, and it's also, especially if it's not this much, if, if it does help the state, I would be more on board, but I don't know if I, I see that.
Right.
Yeah, at this, at this point, I think the state's got whatever they're gonna get, and I'm not sure, but. I just. I just, I started reading the document and at a certain point, I was like, I don't want to bother with this anymore.
It needs to be through the organizations that actually are supporting. Kind of like the Srenity House and that. That's who should be part of this, not us.
Yes. Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
Public records request.
Timing on that was great.
Who was that? That wasn't me. Oh, was that that one? Was that on that computer?
Somehow that got turned on. I can't figure out.
You've just got like a little sound button over there.
I haven't heard that in years.
Really sounded like it was right here.
I can figure out how to turn it off if you wouldn't have it.
Well, it was perfect. It's like the old AOL startup.
We got a new email about public records.
Okay.
So... Where do I start with this? In your previous packets, Sandy included Lisa Williams' emails revealing her concerns that she did not receive all the public records from the planning commission she requested last year. She commented she was denied records and wanted to appeal. Lisa has also asked for a refund as she said she was not paid.
She paid for information she did not receive.
That isn't really not the case. She pays for the copies that she does receive and that's it, so.
Okay.
Has she made a formal appeal? She says she's going to be making an appeal, but has she made a formal appeal? And like, how does she know it's concerning that Kevin Mullany, how does she know that she did not receive those? That's what I...
Well, the ironic thing is that she provided examples of emails that she had from Kevin that were not in what she received from Julie.
But she already had them in her possession.
Yes.
But we're also wondering if she had them in possession. If we're, if there's communications between somebody who is the representative of the town and a town member, those messages should not be deleted nor they should be sent. So if she has evidence of that, that wasn't there, I can see her being annoyed by that. Because if she deleted it, then by mistake or something like that, then... But I guess that's, our policy says that people have any documentation, we have to keep those messages secure, right?
The policy doesn't really state anything like that. The policy just states that if somebody makes a request, Julie as the record keeper will honor that request. Julie turns around and asks everybody for that information. I mean, we have no real control over what other people do with their email. I mean, somebody gets a computer crash, they could lose all those emails, so... I really don't know what we can do. I mean, I don't think there's anything we can do as far as that. The policy states that I can appeal to Julie if she denies somebody something, but Julie did not deny anybody anything. She gave what was, she had.
She had.
So...
Yeah.
We did send out, Sandy sent out an email reminding everybody that emails are part of the public record and not to delete them.
Right.
Yeah, I guess, and I guess that's the main sticking point of doing those personal emails. Those personal emails for, I guess, I wonder almost if we have to modify the policy to say like, if you get, started a conversation with somebody, you need to end it and move it to some kind of official kind of official way or any, you have to keep it or send a copy or CC like town admin or somebody like, because... Yeah. You're right, Bruce, we're there. You can't be responsible for if there is a crash or if your account gets hacked, if it's a personal one, because there's so many other things that there's, there's so many more avenues to get in that we don't provide a set email. But it does, have we talked to Kevin about his emails? I know that's not what we said, but it just gets, it does feel weird that if she has the emails and he didn't put those in, even if we just got a clarification, "Oh, I just missed those," that'd be fine. But it does feel weird that he, if he did, restricts some of those emails.
He has, you explained to him, didn't you, Julie?
Kevin sent me what he had and I wrote to him again, at least twice, saying, "She's still asking for more. I can give you what he said," you know, and he gave me all he had. I mean, I can't do anything more.
Yep.
Okay.
So good faith says that he did this in good faith?
Yes.
Okay.
There's a few other requests here, like...
Yes.
Well, what, where do we stand with those?
So... As far as, moving on to the second one, said she'd like to be paid money for information she did not receive.
She only paid for the information she did receive?
Yeah, you only pay for what you receive.
Paid for what you, what you received.
So there's no money to be refunded.
What about the next one?
She has been provided a copy of the employee handbook that she requested.
Has it? Okay.
We do not have a formal complaint policy.
That is something that she would need to do if she's going to do it. We've covered number five.
Yeah, I mean, we're not going to refund money.
What about number six?
Those are personnel issues.
Yes.
I was wondering on that. And I mean, seven is a flat out no.
Yes. I mean...
Both of them, I mean, they're just both.
Gotcha. I wasn't sure on number six, but...
I mean, we had to do it, just draft a letter, reply back to her on the answers to these questions and end it.
Sounds good.
What did you say, Mark? I'm sorry, isn't here?
I just said we just draft a letter, send it back to Lisa and with the answers to her questions and end it. Because it's what she's asking for. She's either got or can't have, so...
Right.
My suggestion would be that we send it certified mail, just so she can't say that she did not get a reply from us.
Yep, I agree.
I'm good with that.
Yeah.
She's under the assumption that we did nothing, we took no actions on her previous
Right.
emails, which was not the case. We had an executive session with our council and whatever actions were taken after that are not for public record, so.
Sounds good.
Select board comments or concerns?
And Bruce, just one more thing. I'd like to also make it just so Bruce, that letter when it comes out, just Bruce can sign it as chairman of the select board and send it.
That sounds good.
Wait for another two weeks to get it out.
Right.
Send it.
Sounds good.
Yeah, agreed.
I wonder if you should do email and certified mail, so that way...
I think certified mail will be enough.
Well, so he can prove, certified mail just means she's gotten a letter, doesn't say what was in the envelope.
Well, we can CC and keep a copy of it on file here.
I'm just covering both bases and, you know, like saying, sent per email and certified mail this, so that way.
What do we think? Do we need to take that step or...
Cover record either way, so.
Yeah, right. I know, I'm just...
Yeah.
It's just every time Sandy gives her an answer, it just prompts another barrage of emails and...
Okay. I was just a thought, just to, certified mail doesn't specify what's in. If that was the concern.
Right. No one hear what you're saying. Yeah.
Select board comments or concerns? Did we have anything anybody wants to bring up? Guess not. Hearing none, we'll move on. Other business.
Bruce, I met with the superintendent today. Go ahead, Bruce.
Yes, we met with the superintendent today. It was an interesting exchange. One of his comments in the course of our discussion was that, I mean, we talked to him about the fact that for several years now, it's been a problem getting the elementary school. But in the course of the conversation, he brought up the fact that, well, we don't charge you for the use of the building, which was, it kind of dumbfounded me because, you know, about the time we told the townspeople that the school system was going to charge us for the use of the building for town meeting, I'm sure there'd be a riot. In the end, anyway, we, he stated that they would try their best to accommodate us in the future and we made plans to, next December, have a meeting just to finalize the plans for setting up for town meeting. If you'd like to add anything, Sandy, feel free.
I think that's good. I just, when we, I got back and I just, I didn't realize that the town had signed over a quitclaim deed of the school to the district for a dollar.
Did you?
Yes.
Who did?
The school board, the elementary school board. It was signed by a school board member. I mean, that was all part of it. I just, I don't think, I don't know, I don't think people realized that's what happened at the time. I mean, it was all done at public meetings and everything, so I mean, it's legitimate. I just, I didn't... I don't think we knew that it wasn't going to be Wallingford's little school until the first time we went to use it after the merge. You had to go through a lot of layers. That's all.
Yeah. So that happened pre-school board merge?
What's that?
When did the quitclaim happen? Before the merge of schools?
2016, during that whole merge.
During the whole merge.
That's part of the merge. Yeah, I just looked that up when I get back.
Well, I guess it's a good swap to have the cross-country need here.
Right.
For the use of the hall, of the school for...
Someone suggested I should remind them of that, that the road crew had been snow plowing their parking lots for years for free. Didn't think of that at the time. But it's all good. We're going to work on it next year. We're going to put the application in tomorrow. There we are.
Oh, I'm asking if they are, even if the town does not own that anymore.
The other thing that's, Sandy had talked to VLCT about whether the Wallingford Day event required event insurance. I guess probably everyone's read the exchange, but I think not necessarily tonight, but maybe at the next meeting, we need to have a discussion that, make a formal decision that Wallingford Day is going to become a subcommittee of REC or not. And if it does, they need to start following all the rules of a committee where they have a chair, they have agendas posted, they take minutes. So that we are covered under VLCT's policy, so.
I think they already...
Can we make a request to have them hand the REC committee back at the meeting, next meeting?
Do we need the REC committee or just the Wallingford Day?
While it's a subcommittee under the REC committee...
So both?
So probably the chair of this REC committee.
Sumio.
Sumio.
Just to make sure they understand.
Yeah. Okay.
They're ultimately responsible for following the open meeting laws and such, so.
And then filing, I guess, Pixol said at town meeting, the committee would like to forward recommendations to the select board in April, so.
Great.
We should be seeing that pretty soon. They're going to set up some agreements on how we're going to oversee who gets what. Once the money starts to get distributed, so.
Okay.
With that?
I will make a motion to adjourn.
Wait a second.
I'll second.
All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.